Two months now. Something I love about my child, um, that she's healthy, she's happy. She knows that she's cared for and loved. Um, those are some of the things that I wanted to make sure that she had. And she has them. I'm happy today with my daughter. I'm, she's the greatest thing in my life and I'm glad to wake up and see her and every, everything I do, I do it for her.
Si, bueno, yo también vengo de una familia separada. Creo que por eso también me motiva a estar más presente con él. De quizás también estar de la forma quizás que yo no la tuve para máximo. Y también comprender que el padre no solo es el que pone los límites y las reglas, sino que también está ahí para hablar, acompañar, regalonear, jugar, cosas bien. También no solo ser el guía para el niño, sino que también un compañero de vida.
I was more of a elated and thankful because um, for three months, uh, I was in baby land. And when you're in baby world, you're just kind of flying by the seat of your pants and hoping you know that you're just supportive in the ways that you can be supportive.
Pero pues aquí pues ya los enseñan un poquito más cosas que uno no sabía. Como, como cuidarla, como desarrollarla, como educarla y pues es algo bien porque pues cosas que yo no sabía pues ya usted nos las dijo y todo fue como consejos y pues muchas cosas que se aprendieron.
Bueno, creo que por mi parte esperaba algo totalmente diferente como un programa más, más frío por decir algo, no tan cercano a la familia, sino más bien un programa de estado programado para la ayuda solamente. Y a través del programa no hemos dado cuenta que también pasa a ser una familia con nosotros porque nos apoya en un momento difícil o cuando nos hemos visto en dificultades. Siempre hemos podido apoyar en Gabby a través de su programa. Encuentro que ha sido fundamental el apoyo.
You know, my experience has been nothing but positive. Nett has been wonderful. She's on time. She lets me know if there's gonna be any changes in the schedule.
Not only did we get the assistance with this, with this program, but we also made a really good friend. I'm happy to call Gabby our friend.
I still feel the challenge of being a parent now in today's world is immense. I think that you need support.
Es un gran apoyo para nuevos padres y más aún si están en nuestra situación que somos extranjeros, que nuestra familia y amigos como dice Carla están en otro país lejos, entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional y como anímicamente y bueno, en varios aspectos del programa que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
Don't be afraid to take that step. Like, don't be afraid to get help. Because, you know, you might think that you, you know what you're doing, but it's always okay to have extra support and don't do it alone.
Give it a try. You got nothing to lose. It's free. I'm grateful that I took advantage because it's something that has put me in touch with my child or closer to my child in her development.
Are you prepared? We're the Office of Emergency Services and we're committed to providing the most up-to-date and accurate information so that you and your family can stay safe during an emergency. Part of being prepared is knowing your hazards and taking proper precautions. Visit mendo ready dot org. On the Know Your Hazard page, you can find hazards for where you work, where you live, and where your kids go to school. On the Plan and Prepare page, you'll find a plan template. It's important to know what you're gonna do, what you're gonna take with you, how you're gonna communicate, where you're gonna go, and how to get there.
One great way to prepare is to pack a go-bag. Each member of your family should have their own go-bag. Visit our website, mendo ready dot org, to get a list of items that should be in your go-bag.
Gathering and organizing important documents before an emergency is an important part of preparedness. So visit mendo ready dot org today where you can find a list of important documents that you should have ready near your go-bag in case you have to evacuate.
Not every emergency requires people to evacuate. An emergency kit will have supplies for you to remain self-sufficient for 72 hours. Find a list of supplies for disaster kits on our website, mendo ready dot org.
A prepared community is a resilient community that will recover faster from disasters. So take some time today.
I would like to call the October 8th, 2024 Mendocino County Board of Supervisors meeting to order and invite the clerk to conduct roll call.
Supervisor McCordy.
Here.
Supervisor Mulhern.
Here.
Supervisor Hachak.
Here.
Supervisor Jardy.
Here.
Supervisor Williams.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. The next agenda item is agenda item number two, public expression. Public expression is the portion of the agenda that allows the public to speak for two to three minutes on any item of interest so long as that it is within the subject matter jurisdiction. While members of the public are welcome to address the board, under the Brown Act, the board is prohibited from engaging in deliberation or taking action on items that are not on the agenda. Any member of the board is welcome to add an agenda item to a future calendar by working with the chair and the clerk of the board. If you wish to provide comment on items of interest within the subject matter jurisdiction that are not on the agenda, please come forward at this time. If you could please form a line at the podium so I can tell how many speakers we have, that is helpful. If you are on Zoom and wish to make public comment, please use the raise hand feature or press star nine if you're calling via telephone. Please come forward. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Ishvi. I'm a building contractor on the coast. I have two items I'd like you guys to consider for future agendizing. The first one has to do with drought resilience on the coast. I'd like to see you guys discuss a possibility of allowing water tanks and small scale storage projects within the coastal zone without requiring coastal development permits. I know that this was implemented during the drought and now that we've had a reprieve from the drought, it's a really good time to continue these type of projects and not wait for the next drought to come forward. I think you could simply say that any water tanks that are not visible from Highway One or from the bluffs could just be installed without coastal development permits. I think that'd be very helpful for the coast. The second one I'd like you guys to consider has to do with the Class K ordinance currently set up. It only allows for Class K on parcels larger than an acre. I don't understand the logic behind this as we struggle to try to build affordable housing. Class K is one of our best mechanisms to bring down the cost of construction and limiting it to parcels of larger than an acre kind of works against that because the more affordable parcels tend to be the smaller parcels. And I think it bears for you guys to really look into both of those issues and put those on the agenda. I think those would be simple, pretty easy solutions to address some serious concerns. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for coming over today. Good morning. If you could state your name for the record, that would be great. Thank you.
Colleen Browder. I have a message. Cease and desist. State of California has passed AB 969 enacted in October of 2023 using the urgency clause. The bill states, the bill would declare that it is to take effect immediately as an urgency statute. Section two of the bill states, this act is an urgency statute necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, and safety within the meaning of Article Four of the California Constitution shall go into immediate effect. The facts constituting the necessity are, in order to ensure that county elections officials know what voting system they will be using, particularly with the upcoming 2024 March presidential primary, it is necessary for this act to take effect immediately. Quote, "The California Constitution, Article Four, Section Eight D states, impertinent par urgency statutes are those necessary for the immediate preservation of the public's peace, health, or safety. A statement of facts constituting the necessity shall be set forth in one section of the bill. Section two fails to state any facts supporting the assertion of a threat to public peace, health, or safety. In this assembly bill, there are no facts stating either that the election official was unaware of what, what voting systems they would be using, nor any facts amounting to the urgency within the meaning of the California Constitution, Article Four. Additionally, voting by citizens that accurately counted, that are accurately counted does not impact public peace, health, or safety. Thus, there is absolutely no logical, legal, or constitutional basis for the alleged urgency. Therefore, the use of the urgency clause to bypass normal legislative process was and is unlawful and deprived the citizens of California of an opportunity to public, for public referendum. Misusing the urgency clause to avoid checks on legislation and prevent public input is an abuse of legislative authority. It prevents the citizens from having a voice in the legislative process as required by the California State Constitution. Article Two, Section Nine of California Constitution provides for the referendum process in California. Citizens have the power to approve or reject statutes or parts of statutes except for urgency statutes and some other fiscal exceptions. If the legislature has not, if the legislature had not improperly used the process reserved for public health and safety emergencies, the citizens of California could have reviewed and challenged the law of, by referendum pursuant to Article Two, Section Nine of the California Constitution. You have been placed in an unfortunate position where you were unable to conduct the 2024 general election without breaking either state or federal laws. You cannot comply with newly enacted state laws without breaking federal laws. You cannot comply with the federal laws without breaking the newly enacted state laws."
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Marissa Columbia. Okay, additional reasons to cease and desist. Application of the Help America Vote Act. The Help America Vote Act of 2002 here in HAVA requires accurate voter, voter rolls to be maintained by the local jurisdiction. California counties have hundreds and even thousands of ineligible voters on their rolls. This violates HAVA's requirement for accuracy and compliance in elections, including the voter rules. You know this because many citizens have taken it upon themselves to audit the voter rolls because our government does not. And they have found hundreds and thousands of ineligible voters. Some of these citizens have come before officials only to be disparaged and ignored. Many of our elections are decided by less than 100 votes and some by less than 10 votes. Inaccurate voter rules are incontestable fact. The election integrity, sorry, the election, the election integrity project, California reported, they found 1,834, 789 more registered voters and eligible citizens in the state voter rolls, including active and inactive voters. HAVA was enacted due to the 2000 Bush Gore election debacle, which greatly divided voters and destroyed voter trust. Simply articulated, if voter rules are not accurate and compliant, elections cannot be certified as compliant or accurate, meeting the standard within HAVA. HAVA was designed to provide a zero-trust model for voting systems which include transparency to address trust issues which, using electronic voting machines. Although election fraud existed in individual local races, these widespread trust issues did not exist before electronic mechanical machines. In addition, HAVA falls under the Civil Rights Act. Therefore, certifying inaccurate or non-compliant elections violates every citizen's civil rights when elections are not accurate or election laws have been violated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, everybody. My name's Mike Marr from Albion. Financial reasons to comply with HAVA. Not only is HAVA a federal law, but because this county has accepted federal money pursuant to HAVA, it is contract law. The county entered a contract with federal government when it accepted funds under the Help America Vote Act. The Board of Supervisors voted to accept these funds. County Council signed off on the contracts and the R O V clerk recorder agreed to comply with the terms of that contract. If this county follows California law and specifically AB 969, the county cannot meet contractual requirements for the Help America Vote Act. County intends to follow California law, the county will deprive the citizens of the transparency required, resulting in misappropriation of federal funds. Willing to follow the federally mandated HAVA, the county would have to return the HAVA funds to the federal government. If the county returns the HAVA funds, the county cannot pay for the election equipment. The county is required to buy California law. Excuse me. Board of Supervisors have a problem. Each of you swore an oath to the United States Constitution and the Constitution of California. Both constitutions guarantee citizens the right to have their vote accurately counted and to elect their representatives. Your oath is not to the government, but to the constitution of the people you represent. Certifying uncertifiable elections in a federal election can reach the reason, the level of treason. Do not assume just because county officials have not been held accountable to this point that they will not be held accountable now or in the future. We pray those involved do not expose themselves or the county to this financial obligation. We respect, we respectfully demand that the county comply with both the California and federal constitutions rather than following the newly enacted unconstitutional California laws. First, the process must be transparent and the council must be verified. Second, only eligible voters should be allowed to vote. To meet these requirements, the county should have a one-day hand-counted election, requiring ID to vote and mail-in ballots limited to legitimate absentee voters. Your thoughtful consideration of the matters contained in this letter and the requirements of your oath to the U.S. and the California Constitution are greatly appreciated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I think maybe Supervisor Williams has a question or comment.
Yeah, just for the, maybe the chair, through the chair for county council. I think the last three public expressions might best be directed to the assessor clerk recorder. Is that accurate? I don't think this board certifies elections or has any involvement in overseeing the election process.
Charlotte Scott, County Council, while I believe the comments have been, I believe a letter has also been provided to the assessor clerk recorder, so I believe she is aware of this information.
Can, can we confirm that it's not this board that directs the election process and certifying of the vote, that it's actually the elected department head?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are on agenda item number two, public expression. If you're in the room and wish to speak on public expression, please come forward at this time. If you could state your name for the record.
Good morning. I'm Gizmo. I'm here to talk about LCES, which is Lookouts, Communications, Evacuations, and Safety Zones. Some of you may know this term. One of the things that we identified from Redwood Valley, and I know you've heard this speech before, but I'm gonna keep giving it, is an early audible warning system for the outer lying reaches of, of the hills. And in case we have a fast-moving event such as a wildfire driven by, by high winds, which we experienced two years before we came out with our plan, which is to set up a number of sirens around Redwood Valley so that we could have an audible early warning system, like I think most species on the planet have some kind of screech or early warning system of imminent danger. The other thing that I've been hearing recently is that maybe this plan is costing too much and that it might be canceled. I think it's a tool that we could use to get our, to help us feel a little more at ease at what's going on in the near future. We recently had a fire north of Marina Drive, right next to Lake Mendocino. It was at 1:20 in the morning. The residents there were trying to evacuate on Road B, worried about their neighbors. The fire personnel were driving around, knocking on doors, trying to evacuate people. And not that I want to second guess my fire chief, but when you need personnel on site, you need them on site. And so the siren is something that is going to alert people that something's going on. Now, I don't think there's very many people that are gonna be that angry or that confused if they're woken up in the morning by a siren and they're like, oh, I'm, I'm woken up, you know, oh my gosh, you know, what's going on? And to look out and pay attention to what's going on, it could be an issue where they need to get, evacuate like right away. And so I really would hope that this board would continue to look at how important sirens are for an early evacuation, especially for elderly folks. I would like to ask if we are not gonna get the sirens in Redwood Valley. To me, that sends a message that the people who live out at the coast who have tsunami warning sirens are more important than the people who live inland. I know that's not a message that you want to send as a board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any additional public comment in the room and I have no hands raised online. So at this time, I'm moving on to agenda item number three, the consent calendar. Clerk, has proper notice been established?
Proper notice has been established.
Are there any members of the board that wish to pull an item for separate consideration? Seeing none and seeing no comments from the board, I'd like to open this up for public comment. Are there any members of the public that wish to comment on the consent calendar?
Mr. Ake, Goldilocks. I don't know the exact number, but we have two appointments to the Behavior Health Advisory Board this morning, I want to point out. And what I want to point out is that I wasn't aware of that. The board was, the Behavior Health Advisory Board wasn't aware of that. We just met and we meet after, the day after these meetings, which is really not working out really well because the Behavior Health Advisory Board should be putting in some opinions and recommendations on things and they have not been doing that. We've not been able to do that. And that, that's one of the hiccups. I don't know why, why it is that way, but it is. And I've often got up here and said, the missing component is the public and that, you know, everybody here is doing their job. And we did have some people come last time. We're gonna have more this time. And I want to point out and appreciate Adam Gaskett for all his involvement with me. In fact, right now, he sent me pictures this recently. He's out picking up trash. But he's asked to be on that board and he's not on the consent calendar today. So, you know, I also have questions about that. I have lots of questions of interesting things, things that I probably shouldn't say. And the last thing I want to say is I want to apologize for all the things that have dribbled out of my mouth that shouldn't have. But I do appreciate that we are getting people on the board, whether it's correct or not. So, thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any additional public comment for the consent calendar in the room and I have no hands raised online, so I'm gonna bring it back to the board. Supervisor Jardy.
Yeah, I'd like to vote separately on item three, I. This would be nearly $80,000 of additional funds for the purpose of shifting the Mendocino County Tourism Commission from one government code to the other. And the other government code that it would shift it to allows the tourism commission to raise the tax that they collect. And my concern is, I do not believe the cities are going to agree to that, going from 1% to 2%. We don't have evidence that the city councils support that. I think it would be premature to spend additional dollars on that endeavor until we know that the city councils would support the tourism commission going from a 1% tax to a 2% tax within their cities. Because roughly half, close to half of the tax collected is collected from hotels within those cities. And so if you think about it, if the cities withdrew and they doubled the, because they are doubling the tax rate, the tourism commission would have the same amount of money as it has today. So I think prior to spending these dollars, there should be some kind of straw vote or indication, a letter from the city councils saying that they would support the movement from a 1% tax to a 2% tax within their cities. Otherwise, I think it's just money, taxpayer dollars being wasted. So I'd like to vote separately on three I. Second.
Okay. We do have two team members that are working on this. So if the board members have questions for them, that might be a good opportunity. Otherwise, I guess we can just look for a motion for the balance of the consent calendar and a motion to take a vote separately for item three I.
I move approval of the balance of the consent calendar. Second.
Okay, vote by the button.
Through the chair, I may for clarification. Was that including three I?
No, three I will do a separate vote. Excluded.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so that passes. Now we're on to item three I and we have a motion and a second. Supervisor Jardy.
So I'd move to table three I until the Mendocino County Tourism Commission provides a letter from each of the four city councils indicating their position on, on shifting from the, from the one government code to the other.
Supervisor McCordy, did you have a comment during? So I, I'll just make a comment and, and I'm not gonna vote in favor of that motion. The board has been discussing this for close to two years now and I think that if the city councils were against this, then they certainly have had a lot of opportunities to come forward. So I will be voting no and we'll vote by the button.
The motion carries with Supervisor Mulhern and Supervisor McCordy dissenting.
Thank you. We are now on to item number four, the regular calendar. This is an opportunity for our team members to bring forward reports. And I do have some folks on a list and I'd like to start with 4H this morning. If you could please come forward.
Good morning. My name is Jessica Farfian and I am the Mendocino County 4H Community Education Specialist. I'm excited to be here today in order to spotlight the National 4H Week that is this week and also to discuss the profound impacts that the 4H program has had on youth nationwide and also what's going on at our local level. Before just diving into specifics, I'd like to take a moment to introduce the 4H members that I have with me here today. They will go ahead and introduce their names, which clubs they are part of, and also what their current participation in the program is.
Hello, my name is Kenzie Osborne and I am the Potter Valley 4H president. And what I am currently involved in is I am the teen leader for the Mendocino County 4H Rabbit and Cave Project, I'm the teen leader for the Rabbit Meat Pen Project in Potter Valley, I'm the teen leader for the Swine Project, and those are the projects that I am in currently. and I'm hoping to be in more projects. I am also the committee member for the KB Memorial Rabbit and Cave Show. So in April, I put on a rabbit and cave show, and that's countywide, and we just got it sanctioned. So it's an ARBA show. So that means that it's like, it's points for all the youth. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Amaru Gilmore. I'm the president of the Ukiah Shamrock 4-H Club, and I'm involved in quite a few projects this year, including public speaking, photography, flower arranging, and leadership. This year, I'm really excited because I'm hosting my own Emerald Star event, which is a countywide event for members in all the different clubs that we have. And I'm teaching them how to create a record book, which we turn at the end of every year. And it's like a good way to teach people how to keep records, which I know is going to be great later in life. Thank you.
My name's Kaden Comstock. I'm from the Redwood Valley Kappa 4-H Group. I'm one of the vice presidents. I'm currently in PIGS, Lees Across America, community service, and many other projects. And I'm currently working on my Emerald Star to get high 4-H going again, which we spoke more on later. But it's generally to get older 4-H members, keeping them in 4-H to learn more life skills and stuff like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to share some compelling statistics from a California 4-H alumni study that happened. It was conducted in 2021. And essentially, the study aimed to measure the impacts of the 4-H programming on youth who participated on it. And some of the key findings were that in education success, 4-H alumni were twice as more likely to get a bachelor's degree. In mental health, 76% of alumni reported greater satisfaction with their mental and emotional health. In civic engagement, California 4-H alumni voted more regularly than the general population. And in leadership and confidence, an impressive 93% of alumni attribute their leadership skills to 4-H. And 88% also said that their confidence in public speaking had been significantly boosted during their time in the program. So this demonstrates that the skills and values instilled in our youth through 4-H have lasting impacts, not only that extend far beyond their time within the program. Like Kaden mentioned, we do have a high 4-H that's coming back in order to continue fostering these goals. This countywide project is specifically designed for 4-H teens aged 14 to 19 years old that provides a peer network in leadership, life readiness, and fostering important social connections. We believe that this initiative will not only enhance youth collaboration, but also strengthen community ties throughout Mendocino County. And I just wanted to share a few of our planned events coming up for this program year, 2024, 2025. This winter, we will be hosting our public speaking event called Presentation Day. This is where members can showcase their communication skills. In the spring, we will celebrate two events, Extravaganza and Fashion Review, that will highlight the diverse talents within our program that are actually non-animal-related. In the summer, we are excited to introduce our first annual dinner event, which will celebrate and recognize our devoted volunteers in acknowledging their vital roles in our community. So in closing, I would like to emphasize the incredible journey that 4-H offers to our youth in Mendocino County. The skills they develop and the friendships they forge and the confidence they gain are truly transformative. Thank you for your attention, and I look forward to engaging with all of you as we celebrate National 4-H Week and many opportunities it brings to our young people.
Thank you. Supervisor McGordy?
So on our board are two people who are involved with the 4-H program. Supervisor Mulhern was the secretary, working for 4-H right out of high school. I hire her. And then also, as part of University of California Cooperative Extension, I served as county director two different periods. So I work closely with 4-H. 4-H is present in all five districts. Our membership goes up and down, but it offers youth, particularly in rural areas, an opportunity for personal growth and camaraderie and doing something positive and wholesome. And it doesn't have to be just about raising pigs or cooking or sewing. There's much, much more to do in the activities. And I consider it a very, very good investment in Mendocino County funds to assist the growth of youth in a positive way. Thank you all for coming here today.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I do have a list of several other speakers, and I can call on you, or you can come forward. And I'll call on Tim Hallman.
Good morning, supervisors. Chair Mulhern, CEO Antle, County Council Scott, Tim Hallman with the Executive Office, Fleet Facilities. Right now, I'm just coming up here to give you an update on the 911 bunker. As most of you have probably seen coming in, it's up there. It came in last Wednesday. We had a very large crane come in and deliver it, put it into place. It's sitting where it needs to be. It's being put together. We anticipate that structurally speaking, it should be finished by the end of this month. But internally, we've already started doing measurements. So IT has already had a chance to go in and start measuring for their equipment going in. A lot of those things just happen very rapidly. Again, with that bunker being here and being present, we expect things to start happening very quickly with that 911 bunker, start seeing more activity there and seeing the transition over from the basement there.
Thank you. Supervisor Hasek?
Thanks for being here. You have a lot of big projects going on right now. You have the puff, you've got the mental health wing of the jail. So how are things going with those?
Right now, again, those things are all moving along pretty rapidly. We have two very motivated contractors on both of those projects, trying to beat out the weather. So today, we will see the first pores for the slabs going on at the jail. So starting at 10 o'clock this morning, we should start seeing that pumper show up and the first of the three pores that we anticipate having this month. So ideally, we'd like to have all three of those pores completed this month, which will complete all the slab work and for the most part, on the jail up there. So I mean, you know, that's a big step. That gets us to where we're on exposed dirt. We can start working on the walls and start going vertical. There's also a lot of steel that's going in up there. So I don't know if any of you had a chance to drive up by there. There's a lot of vertical steel that's now in place, especially on the east side of the building there. So I mean, you know, we just have a lot going on. You'll see a lot of people going there. It's like a bunch of army ants that are currently covering the jail. The puff is also seeing a lot of activity. As far as the contractor there, Midstate, really would like to see asphalt there by the middle of this month, surrounding the, you know, just the skirting of it, so they can get in there and continue to work through the winter. They do have a goal to have concrete in place before weather hits. You know, hopefully, weather holds out a little bit. We do need rain, but again, it's the balancing act. We'd like to see that move forward. And if they can get that slab poured, then that, of course, just like the jail, allows them to continue working more through the winter than if they have to do it on bare dirt.
Thank you for those updates. Supervisor McGordy?
So how about an update on the privatization of the garage and electronic tracking of vehicles? How are we doing with that?
Okay, well, we have completely ceased functioning of the garage. Garage does not exist anymore. Staff have all either moved on to other positions or have left the county. But for the most part, we're doing some cleanup there. We're preparing for surplusing of any of the materials that are no longer needed. DOT has come by and put their tickets on a handful of the fixed assets that are there that they would like to go ahead and take and any other tools that we don't longer need, but they could have use for. So those are going to get moved up there. As far as the Geotab tracking, obviously, we have that in all of the prescribed vehicles within the county, not counting Public Safety, et cetera. We are starting to collect that data. We are getting ready to bring forward Ordinance 3.12, an update on it, as well as Policy 26. That is in the works. We have had meet and confer with all of the bargaining units, and we have a handful of things that we're addressing. We have a manual that we're creating in the background that helps address some of those issues. So I'm hoping to, in the very near future, in one of the board, in two of the board meetings, to bring the ordinance for the first reading and second reading, as well as the policy to bring forward, at which point, we will set up, you know, a mechanism so that we can report that data out, as well as the way in which we can address complaints or also to make sure that department heads have their information. They need that information. We do have several vehicles that the CEO Antle has seen some of these reports, and they are going quite speedy, I mean, into the 90 mile an hour range. And that is something that we would really like to get into the hands of the department heads so that they can address that and make sure that the staff are educated in a way to make sure that they're safely using the county vehicles.
Thank you. I'm sure we'll address that quickly. This time, I'd like to invite Deputy CEO Tony Rakes.
Good morning, Chair Mulhern, Chair Mulhern, members of the board, CEO Antle, County Council Scott, Tony Rakes, Deputy CEO. I'm here to provide an update on two critical projects, one related to the 911 bunker installation and the other a project initiative 69 from our IT master plan that was adopted by this board in 2018. The first one, related to the 911 bunker, is the replacement and upgrade of our 911 dispatch console. That is projected to be completed right around mid-year of 2025. So there will be some delay from when the bunker is complete and installed and all the wiring is done to the actual dispatch console being installed. But that project is moving on on schedule. We're very excited to have supported, updated, and robust equipment in place to support that critical, that critical service that dispatch provides. The second is our Phase Three of our Microwave Radio MPLS project, which is the replacement of antennas, dishes, and all of our radio sites. This is a huge initiative that has been on our roadmap for many years. This board provided funding to IT to complete this project in 2021. We've separated this large project into three distinct phases. We're finally at the tail end now of Phase Three, which we expect to be complete at the end of this calendar year. It's incredibly exciting, and thanks to the incredibly knowledgeable communications team that we have here at the county. We're very fortunate to have such skilled staff working on this. This really marks a pivotal point in the resiliency and effectiveness of our critical communication infrastructure going forward for the next 20 years, perhaps longer if we keep the systems, you know, as we have this previous, the current system that we're on. So very exciting. We will continue to provide updates when we complete closeout update to let the board know how that's gone and what the expectations are going forward.
Thank you. I think Supervisor Williams has a question or comment.
In past years, Supervisor Jerdy has raised the idea of consolidated dispatch. Would this new console facilitate consolidating some of the dispatch efforts? It seems like public dollars are being spent on duplicated services throughout the county.
If I may, through the chair. Without speaking directly to the topic of a consolidated dispatch, the hardware itself is capable.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe I may have some other departments that would like to present, Emergency Services, and then perhaps Air Quality.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, CEO Antle, County Council Scott, Jeff Fadair, Emergency Services Coordinator for Officer Emergency Services. Fire Prevention Week is this week, October 16th through the 12th. It commemorates the Great Chicago Fire, which began on this date in 1871. Today also marks the anniversary of our own tragic fire, the Redwood Complex, in which nine people lost their lives in 2017. National Fire Protection Association, NFPA, puts out an annual campaign regarding fire safety. The purpose of this year's campaign is to educate everyone about the importance of having working smoke detectors in the home. In my career in the fire service, we never went to a fire fatality in a home that had a working smoke detector. The Great Shakeout is an annual earthquake drill held on the third Thursday in October. This year, that'll be 10:17 at 10:17 a.m. Participants are encouraged to stop what they're doing and drop, cover, and hold on. This is how we are supposed to protect ourselves from strong shaking that can knock us down or knock something onto us. Practicing helps us be ready to react. This is also your annual reminder to review your family plans and supplies to secure your space, prevent damage and injuries from an earthquake. OES will be conducting an exercise with our ham radio volunteers, also known as MACs, and our call center. The call center is activated when inquiries for information begin to overwhelm the 911 dispatch center. Requests from the public for information are handled by a team of call takers who are dedicated to that event. Our call center has recently been relocated and reconfigured. The space has not yet been tested to see if it meets the needs of the call center staff. We will simulate a communications outage affecting parts of the county as a result of an earthquake. The next item I have for you is, OES will host the California Department of Water Resources on 10/16 for the Regional Preseason Fire Coordination Meeting. I attended the meeting last year in Humboldt County, and this year, we are fortunate to be able to host it so that our operational area partners can attend. Floods are among the deadliest disaster types in our country, and planning for mitigation and response are of utmost importance. DWR's meeting is not open to the public, but is intended for those in emergency management and emergency response who might deal with floods. OES will also be having a booth at Pumpkin Fest in Ukiah on October 18th. We will be encouraging the public to sign up for alerts and warnings so that they can receive early notification of events that might impact them. We will also have information about packing a go-bag, and one needs to be included in this important kit. We'll have information about planning and preparedness so that if you receive an evacuation order or warning, you're ready to get out quickly. Also, at the Pumpkin Fest booth, the vendor who is helping us update our community wildfire protection plan will be joining us in our booth. And that's on the 18th in Ukiah. And they'll be there to share information with the public and to take input about wildfire protection in our county. Additionally, there will be a public meeting on October 21st at 6:00 p.m. in Redwood Valley. This will be held at the Behavioral Health Training Center, 8207 East Road in Redwood Valley, south of Schoolway. The public can give their input on the community wildfire protection plan update.
Thank you. Supervisor McGordy has a question or comment?
I do. Jeff, I'm curious if you're involved at all with Redwood Valley's siren system? I attended a meeting, I think it was over two years ago, where they rolled out what they wanted to do. They had chosen a vendor, and I'm not understanding why they continue to have difficulty installing the system. Have you been involved at all?
Yes, I recently, within the past month, I would say, attended a meeting out at Redwood Valley Fire Station with the fire chief, Gwen Malilla and Kelly Hansen. And we discussed how, since that project was proposed, costs have gone up. And what was proposed to be purchased is we're now able to fund less just because of the inflation of costs. So we discussed that with the chief and discussed options, and the chief was going to get back with his board and meet back with us. So that's kind of where we're at.
Good, so it's on your radar?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
Mr. Lopez?
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Ephraim Lopez. I'm the Deputy Air Pollution Control Officer for Mendocino County Air Quality Management District. I'm here today to inform, first of all, good morning, members of the board. I'm here to inform you guys about an upcoming change at the district that's been in the works for a couple of years. As you recall, during our budget hearing, I mentioned that the district's budget is underfunded and unsustainable using the current and outdated fee schedule. And as such, I've been working with a consultant and our staff to get a better idea of what full cost recovery would be. Currently, we're working to bring a draft to the public by the end of the month for the public to review, and then to the general board by the end, by mid-December. In that 30-day public comment notice, we'll have a draft scheduled up for stakeholder review on our website, and we'll have hard copies of it for review at the district headquarters, which is located at 1100 Hastings Road, Suite A. We're no longer at Observatory or Goby Street. As a reminder, for the general public... As a reminder for the general public, the Mendocino County Air Quality Management District is a body corporate and politic and a public agency of the state. Therefore, we're not part of the county, and we're not a county department, nor do we receive county general fund tax stuff. Rather, the air district is largely funded by the fees in our fee schedule, and this is consistent with Clean Air Act stating that all sources of air pollution shall pay for the cost of being regulated. As a final note, I want to mention that in our coming proposed fee schedule, we're seeking to achieve full cost recovery, but at the same time, we'll be capping our existing permits' renewal fees by a maximum of 15%. So, whatever the fee schedule proposed amount is for those that have existing permits with air quality, only increase by 15% every year until they reach that cost recovery, so there won't be a big shock to existing facility, if that's the case. There'll be more to come as we begin to wrap things up with our consultants, and be bringing any updates to the general public, to the Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Jordy?
Yeah, so thanks for the report. As you said, you're an arm of the state and in Mendocino County because I think it's less than 33% of the population lives, or 35% lives in cities at the moment. The cities aren't on the Board of Directors of the air district, so in our county, it's five supervisors, and other county cities compose a larger share of the county population. Cities are almost always on the air district board. But as an agent of the state, and I realize, I'm sure, in almost every single case, the lion's share, if not 90-plus percent of the share of the budget from an air district comes from fees for service, it's also my understanding that air districts are often applying for grants and receiving grants from the state of California, maybe the air resources board. If you're working with a consultant on the budget, could you also look, maybe including the presentation, the share of the Mendocino Air District's budget that comes from outside grants, like the air district, the state air resources board, and maybe do a comparison, Lake County, maybe the Northern Sonoma County Air District, just so we can kind of see where does Mendocino County's air district fall range? So, essentially, are we getting roughly the same percentage of our budget coming from state grants as, say, Lake and Northern Sonoma air districts? Would be the question I would ask.
Sure, we can look into that. We have been looking at other counties' fee schedules to get examples of how we make our fee schedule a little bit more clear, and at the same time, kind of what the revenue would be versus what we bring in, in terms of fees. We have recently kind of separated what we have for our operating budget versus what we have for our grant budget, and we can probably get the information between two as it is now, but I'll have to work with the components to get what the projected schedule would be versus existing, although some of those from years past aren't no longer going to be funded, so it might be by one or two of the grants. But we are very lucky to have quite a bit of grants here in Mendocino. We have really good staff that's been trying to implement them, even while we were very much understaffed, so it's been a really good thing for the district.
Thank you. Supervisor McGordy, Hasek, and then Williams?
So, this is a, first of all, good morning. Good to see you. This is a question that Supervisor Williams and I have had for some time, which is consolidating our burn permits with CAL FIRE and air quality. Is there anything that's been done on that, and is there any possibility in your mind that such a simplified permit process could be published?
We're in conversations now. They halted a little bit during fire season, since there was a lot of need for some of the fire agencies that we're speaking with to focus their efforts elsewhere. But I've still been working with CAL FIRE and local fire agencies, started attending fire chiefs meetings and build stronger relationships, figure out how to work together on the topic. So far, we've seen what some of the data collected for CAL FIRE is versus air quality permits, and we're working on being able to essentially share the information, because that's where the biggest trouble is, because if it goes to CAL FIRE, the air district wouldn't have that information, which is a little bit of a part. We're working to troubleshoot it, and we're going in the right direction, but we still haven't gotten it yet.
Thank you. Supervisor Hasek?
Yeah, thank you. Couple questions. One is, when was the last time that the fees were increased?
That's a good question, and I'll have to get back to you. It was quite some time.
Okay. The other question, and it's been brought up to me by fire chiefs and CAL FIRE, I think, that, you know, if people are not, if the fees go up for a burn permit, then people just don't get the burn permit, and they just do their burns. And so, are there any grants out there that could help people to keep that cost of the burn permit down so that people, you know, even free? So, people register for a burn permit, get the burn permit, everyone knows what they're doing, and so, we're better off because of that. So, are there any grants out there that might offset that, you know, cost reduction?
There's a few layers to the answer, but the short answer is, yes, there is some, but it depends on the type of burn permit. It's a residential burn permit, and ag burn permit for like a vineyard removal, there are two different types of burns, and they have two different sets of radiation and the health and safety. If it's like a prescribed fire, for example, there's a few pretty large ones coming out that I'm working on a public service announcement for. Those are a little bit different, and currently, we're working to use some grant dollars for those type of larger burns. If it's a private land, working through CAL FIRE or partnering with CAL FIRE, even though it isn't necessarily CAL FIRE doing it, but they're overseeing the burn, and those people would have covered the cost through one of our grants. And we're looking to work with a couple different avenues for being able to cover the cost of a burn permit, which is, right now, it's $19. It probably will go up, but I'll have details at a later date. And then, we can see if residential burn permits can be covered through a different agency or a different avenue, or through a grant from the state. But right now, for those fees, it is the way to go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Williams?
I think our air quality staff is doing an excellent job, so thank you. But an idea for the directors, what if we were to issue a burn permit for every parcel in the county? Just a blanket approval? We already send mailers out, I don't know, included in the property tax, right? We can probably throw in a small piece of paper in there, not pay any additional postage. That way, we take the fee out of it, we take the bureaucracy out of it of having to fill out forms, we tell people, these are the rules, we thank you for doing your fuel reduction because it may save us from a mega-fire, which has the biggest air quality impact and, you know, real impact to both our budget and the state's budget. Is that a possibility that we just blanket issue for every parcel in this county?
I think that's not agendized, and the Board could discuss that. Perhaps, Mr. Lopez, when he brings back the fee discussion, I know that there is a dollar amount that's attached to doing that. There's a cost that the department has that is why we need to update the fees so that those costs are balanced. So, I think perhaps if that can come back with that item, that might be helpful for the Board to consider at that time.
I understand, but, so, as part of that, when it comes back, I can support it coming back, it needs to be agendized. When it's a fee on, say, a restaurant, they don't like it, they may not be able to afford it, but they weigh the consequence of not paying for that permit, and they're going to pay it. But I think when we look at individuals doing fuel reduction in their backyards, if we raise the fees, they simply won't get the permit, which means we don't get the chance to educate them. We make outlaws out of good people who are trying to be responsible and reduce their fuel to save us from wildfires, or we don't get the fuel reduction. So, I'm a little bit hesitant to ask staff to bring back fee increases. I think it's counter to the overall safety of the county. Is it, how do we incorporate some feedback in the item that comes back so that it's not simply a fee increase?
Scott?
Like the Chair had mentioned, I think this is a larger discussion, and I don't think we can get much more into it today without, you know, going outside the bounds of the Brown Act. But if the supervisor would like to address that and work with the department and County Council to assess whether that is something that's legally feasible or feasible pursuant to the regulations that govern air quality, I think that would be a useful discussion, but I don't know that there's much more that we could answer to it today.
Can, through the Chair of County Council, I'm happy to work with Council and air quality staff. Can we get a straw poll of the Board on that item coming back so that we don't work on something that has no conceptual support?
I think you could, you could do a straw poll to get direction to bring that back.
Okay. Chair, are you willing to do a straw poll?
Can you clarify the exact question that you're wanting the Board to consider this time?
I want the directors of the district to consider issuing burn permits, air quality permits, for all parcels countywide.
Okay, this has been discussed, this has been discussed before, and there are financial implications, so I think the agenda item also needs to include that. Mr. Lopez?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that there's different types of burn permits depending on the parcel, so that would have to be considered. A different burn permit has different rules, so if you issued one, it'd be very different rules or permit conditions.
Yeah, I'm supposed to clarify, I'm looking at the four-by-four, not that anybody, I've never seen anybody do a four-by-four pile. Maybe Sheriff Kendall has done one, but I mean, it's pretty hard to keep it in that. But that's the type of permit I'm talking about, the residential, you know, the homeowner that's just clearing their backyard.
Board members, are you in support of bringing this item forward? I will start with district number five.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Three.
Well, like I said earlier, and we got from Mr. Lopez, that he's looking for grants to offset that, any kind of increase, so I'd certainly appreciate that kind of information, but I'd consider whatever else I'd consider.
One.
Yeah, along with the financial analysis of what it would mean if we weren't collecting that fee.
And I am in support of having an easier process for residents to be able to conduct safe burns at home. I am also aware that there are financial implications, and so would appreciate as much information as possible coming back with the agenda item for consideration. Thank you very much for coming today. Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Nope.
Okay. I think that we are complete with item 4A, unless there are any other members of the team that wish to come forward?
Chair, if I may?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Dorothy Antle, CEO. I would just like to clarify Tim Holman's comment about the speeding, and yes, those have came to me and have been addressed with the department heads. It's not only dangerous driving, it is also illegal, so we are addressing them.
Thank you. Okay, we will now move on to item four. Oh, are there any members of the public that wish to comment on item 4A, any of the reports that were received today? I'm seeing no one come forward in the room, and I have no hands raised online, so now I will move on to item 4B. The discussion of possible action, including acceptance of a presentation regarding the status of pre-trial release program for Mendocino County fiscal year 2324, and direction to staff as necessary. Chief Probation Officer Eisen Locatelli and wingwoman Katie Ford, I'm not sure your exact title, Assistant Chief, thank you.
Eisen Locatelli, Chief Probation Officer. We do have a slideshow presentation for you, and it's coming up on the screen now. Try to keep the slides brief for you with simple explanations. I'll give you the caveat of, most of your questions, as they come up, will be answered by the next slide, so if I don't answer it, if we could wait a little bit. But as we go through it, most of the questions will be addressed by the future slides. It starts with a general slide and then gets into the details on the next one. So, just to recap, the Board of Supervisors approved on April 5th, 2022, an MOU between the county and the Superior Court to operate a pre-trial program. We've been in operation since June 30th of 2022. This presentation today will cover one year's worth of data. It's a fiscal year, not a calendar year's data, so that's what your presentation's going to be about. The Board also approved on June 25th, 2024, another three-year contract with the court, and that's going to run through June 30th of 2027. A reminder, Senate Bill 129 is essentially why this has happened. The state is funding a pre-trial program, but they haven't funded it, again, at a full cost. The Community Corrections Partnership and the Board of Supervisors through General Fund has rounded out the program to make it more public safety friendly than the $200,000 that comes from just SB 129 funding. So, with that, that gives you basically a synopsis, an overview, an introduction for everything that we're doing. I wasn't going to get into this, but a few different folks met with me over the last week or two wanting some clarification, so I think it's important that we get that out there right now. So, PTR is pre-trial release. PTA is promised to appear. When you get arrested, you go to jail, and the sheriff's office determines if they're going to give you a promise to appear, which is a citation to show up to court. A pre-trial release is if you don't get a promise to appear and you don't bail out of jail, my staff will come down and do an assessment on you. Probation doesn't release anybody from custody. We do a paper assessment that doesn't even have a recommendation on it. It just gives the tool that we use, which is the PSA, it gives the judge a risk level that, are you going to come back to court? And if I let you out, are you going to commit another crime? If you are going to commit a crime, is it going to be violent? Those are the three things that our assessment tool gives the court, and then the court makes the decision at the arraignment to set bail, which means keep you in custody and you have to pay your way out. ORU, which means you're just straight released into the community with no monitoring or supervision, or they give you pre-trial release, which is then monitored by my department based on the risk level, which is a one, two, or three. So, that seems to have been missing amongst a lot of community members and other people wanting to understand, why do people keep coming in and out of jail? That's the question. And that question is, we're humans, and humans are hard to predict, and crime isn't something that you can calculate with a presentation like this, but I'm going to do my best to show you statistics and data that'll make you understand a little better. So, let's dive into this. Okay, so, first slide, 3,995 bookings for the year. 2,971 not assessed by probation, 933 are assessed. So, that was the entire years, and that's a fiscal year again. How many people were booked into our jail? And how many people ultimately are assessed is about a quarter of the folks. Flip to the next slide, and you'll see your next question was probably, why weren't they assessed? And there's the reasons they weren't assessed. Some were because the jail released them, so there was nobody there for me to assess. Some are on supervision, so why would we do a pre-trial assessment on somebody that's already being formally supervised by a state agency or a county agency or some other county or some other state entity? Some are just remands, so they're serving time, so we wouldn't assess those people. They need to serve a sentence. So, keep going. Breaking that down even further, you get a way better look at why folks were not assessed. So, again, 259 people are serving sentences, some are pending a judgment and sentence, some are court-remanded in court. Some were just sentenced to the jail to do a book and release, so they just had to show proof. so they just had to show proof of bookings. Some the DA declined to file on. Some are PTA, that's where the jail is citing them out. 526 people bailed. No ability to stop that from happening. People are constitutionally afforded the opportunity to bail. Public safety has nothing to do with it. It's strictly monetary. You have the money or you don't. And then again, it keeps getting into exactly why 2,971 were not assessed. So of those 933 that we completed an assessment on and gave to the court for review, the court again denied a release on pretrial for 449. They granted it 196 times, and 288, there was no decision. You see the percentages there. Pretrial is being granted 21% of the time for those that we assessed. Flip it, and again, you see your next question is probably, why is the court denying pretrial? So 414 times, the court has determined that they're not going to release these people into the community, and they're going to have to pay bail if they want to get out prearraignment. And then you can see 35 people or 8% are OR'd. So that the judge has determined is a super low risk to the community, and they're going to release them with no monitoring, and they don't have to post bail. The reason a decision wasn't made by the court is there was nobody there for them to make a decision about. 103 of those folks, the DA decided they were not going to prosecute. They weren't going to charge, so they're going to be released. 95 people right at arraignment just entered to plea. They admitted their guilt and were sentenced right there on the spot. Again, bail 48 times. After we've done our assessment, they've then posted bail and gotten out. PTA is the one I explained last time. This, this is where the communication between probation and jail could improve, where we don't do an assessment if we know that they're going to PTA. But that's inefficiency between two agencies on 34 times. But you can see out of 3,995, that's not a big inefficiency, but it's something to work on. Cases dismissed, other, A49B. So then when you flip into the 196, what's happened to them? Of those people that were granted, what, what level of supervision were they? What level of monitoring did the pretrial program provide? What risk were they to the community when they were released? So 47% is a level one, which is the lowest risk. It essentially means it takes, it takes into account two, two scores, as I mentioned, their risk not to show up to court, and their risk if they get out or they get, commit another crime while they're pending court. So level ones, 47%, the lowest risk is being released. Level threes is your highest, so 25% of the 196 are high risk. And if they're going to commit a violent crime, you can see that number that was flagged, 33 people. Our risk assessment tool said 33 people, if they're going to commit another crime, will commit a violent crime. Flip it. This is a moment in time. So at June, on June 30th, 2024, those 196 people, those 196 grants, this is what's happened to them. So you see 88% or, I'm sorry, 88, which is 45%, went through the program in its entirety during that time period and were successful in doing so. Conversely, 50 were unsuccessful, and they were terminated from the program for whatever reason. They didn't come to court too many times. They picked up another crime. They blew us off, refused to come to probation and participate in monitoring. 18% or 35 folks that were granted this, so they could have been granted it on June 29th. That's why it's a moment in time. 18% or 35 were still active under monitoring when this snapshot was taken. So of the folks that we monitor, there were 625 different court dates that were scheduled. And you can see 79% of the time, they appeared for their in-person court appearance during this timeframe. So everybody that was released onto the monitoring program, that's the return to court date. That's a, that's a high number of a return to court date. That shows some real efficiencies for the court and the county. When you're talking a court appearance, you're talking a public defender, a DA, a probation officer, a judge. Those are some high-priced people sitting in a courtroom waiting for somebody to show up. So you really want that to be as efficient as possible and to get through those proceedings and not having them drag out. So that's what you have there. A 977 just means that their in-person appearance was waived, so they actually are coming at 81%. This question is what is asked often of us. What is your recidivism? The definition of recidivism is very complicated, and it depends who you're talking to and what you're talking about. But on this particular snapshot, it shows you that of those 196 people, 137 had no arrests, no new arrests, no new involvement in the criminal justice system while they were out of custody. You have 53 new arrests. Break that 53 down. How many of those were actually violent? It was six. Six crimes. In Mendocino County, again, with our, our criminal justice meeting and our pretrial work group, we decided to expand what violent crime means beyond what the PSA has. So our definition is broader than, say, Sonoma Counties, which also uses the PSA. We were very interested in not being on the front pages for these types of releases, so we're very transparent in what we do, and we're more, we're catching more data than some of the other folks who are operating programs so that we can report out on it and make adjustments. But you'll remember the flag previously, it said 33. 33 of those folks, if released, were predicted to commit violent offenses, and we had six. So you never want violent offenses in your community, but the percentages of risk are, are much lower than what we should have anticipated on our actuaries. So that, that essentially brings us to the last page of the slideshow. All the data's there for board members in the community to review. And I'm definitely open for going back to any of the slides, answering any questions that the board may have.
We'll start with Supervisor McGordy.
Well, good morning. Good to see you, Chief, and thank you for this presentation. It's very data-driven, and we can totally understand the program in a very short period of time, which I really, really appreciate. As supervisors, where we have to make decisions all the time, and sometimes getting information from departments is difficult. So this is a model of how we like to receive information. Thank you very much for you and your staff and the work that you're doing.
Supervisor Jordy?
Yeah, so I guess to slide two, it talks about the funding for it. It was 206,000 one-time funding from the state, local Superior Court, and then another $200,000 annual allocation through 2020, June 2027. And is this the entire cost of, of the program? I mean, I know on the backend, it should save money in operating the jail because there's some people who are being diverted out of the jail, but what's the total cost of the program?
So as I mentioned, the 200,000 is not enough to run a, an effective pretrial program if, if you want more than just an assessment. Our pretrial work group decided that an assessment alone isn't public safety, that you actually need some monitoring and you need some teeth to it, or what's the point? So 200,000, we went to the CCP. The CCP has funded one FTE and a .25 clerical. The entire program is, I want to say a .75 supervisor, two FTE line staff, a legal secretary, and a probation assistant. So the entirety of the program is, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but it's the compilation of funding between SB 129, the CCP, and the General Fund. And the General Fund is less than a third of the program's total costs.
So the way I'm looking at it is, when you talk about going to CCP, well, those are state dollars that were previously going to other programs in Mendocino County. So it's just sort of rearranging the dollars that were flowing into Mendocino County to a different purpose, right?
Essentially, the answer is yes and no. So the CCP, as you know, is state funding to offset realignment costs in the increase in jail population. The jail itself used to operate a pretrial program back in 2014, 15, somewhere in that timeframe, but they were only providing the Ohio Risk Assessment Tool. There was no monitoring with it. That funding was then frozen when the jail went through some staffing concerns. So that's where we retapped in, and it's that frozen pot of funds that was previously going to the jail to make a more robust pretrial monitoring program.
So where I'm getting at this is the statewide, the state recognized that, that this was the better model. I know that we were, Mendocino County was one of the last counties in California to have a robust pretrial release program. And so the state's willing to invest some money into it. Ideally, in the perfect world, they would invest the entire cost of having an effective program. And I guess what I'm thinking is, I'm hoping that each year, because the executive office asks all the departments, do they have any suggestions for the legislative platform, that this would be something that your department would be making sure that there's proper language in there and that there's follow-up anytime you or the CEO or the board or your staff is meeting with their legislative reps and/or their staff. Because again, it seems to me that this, in, this should be a program that the county is advocating that the state would fully fund, one way or the other, either through a reshuffling of the deck within the CCP funds, making sure there's enough in that fund to pay for this, or direct funding for this program in, in small rural counties like Mendocino that are just sort of coming to the party basically in this. So anyway, those are my thoughts, because obviously every department that draws on general fund dollars is under the microscope every time there's a budget, every time there's a mid-year true-up, and it just seems to me that this would be an obvious place to look for the state to fully fund the program.
A quick response to that. The genesis of this was the SB 10, which would have been funded, but California voted no. You'll remember the bail bondsman got involved. So then came the Humphreys decision, which is a court ruling, and the county's responsible for the court ruling, which would have been 100% general fund. Then came SB 129, which brought some funding to the table, but only at the assessment level. So we could choose to just do assessments with no monitoring, but no county partner and no public safety official supported that. So we came at it with a three-pronged approach for funding, and we have a much safer program that has data, and we have to report all of this to the judicial council. But hearing what you're saying, I have been advocating for SB 129 funding to increase, as it's not even close to an effective allotment to run a pretrial program.
Supervisor Williams?
Supervisor McGordy said the model presentation, and it looks like the program is a success. What, is there a feedback loop? Those six that we deemed wouldn't commit violent acts and did, I mean, the simplest would be, we're not going to trust those same individuals next time we run through the decision tree, because we saw they were, you know, sort of the, the failure case. What, how do we incorporate that feedback, and is it more broad? Do we adjust the decision tree based on the findings? Yes. This isn't the only presentation that I give on this topic. I meet with the judges, all nine of them regularly, and we give them quarterly reviews of what they're doing. And I assume any elected official that makes a decision that has negative consequences will reconsider the next time that they make such a decision. Judges are elected officials, and everything that they do is public. And this is a way to keep statistics on every released decision that is made by our elected officials. Our county hadn't previously had any data or statistics of this nature, and this is again, only 25% of those 4,000. I don't have any data on the other 75%, so I couldn't tell you how effective this is because we're not authorized or paid to do this type of work with the other 75% of the arrestees in Mendocino County. It'd be interesting to know. I would love as a, I'm not going to call myself a data geek, but as somebody who loves data and to be able to make decisions, what those percentages are. Agreed. Thank you.
Supervisor Hachak?
Yeah, I appreciate this conversation, and in the legislative platform already, it says, "Support additional state funding for pretrial service under SB 129." So we have been advocating for that.
I did submit that last year, and I hit repeat for this year's submission. I think our deadline was last Friday for department heads to jump on the ledge platform.
Right. So thank you.
Supervisor Jordy?
Yeah, thanks for getting that language in there. Question, you just said it would be great if, if, if this county, or one of 58, knew what was the success rate or failure rate of the 75% who are not analyzed in this program. Would it be appropriate for the county to advocate for, you know, like a pilot funding program from the state to get three years' worth of data, let's say, as a comparator of the 75% who are not in the program, so, so that the state and the county of Mendocino could learn what's the success/failure rate for people who are in this program versus people who are not?
I think it would be an interesting study in a diverse county with more support infrastructure, to be able to pull that data and follow those folks. But you're following 4,000 individuals or 4,000 bookings throughout a year, so, you know, it's a, it's a labor-intensive, very labor-intensive. I know from the 25% how labor-intensive that is for our staff. So to follow that many, you would just need to have a county that has enough staff, funding, and time to be able to do that. But you could advocate for that. I just wouldn't recommend Mendocino in our current staffing issues to be that county.
Okay, so you'd like to see the data, but you'd like to see it from another county?
Ultimately, yes. And I know where my staffing levels are, and I'm not advocating to make them do, wear another three hats.
So could this work be done through a contract for the other 75%? Since it would, under the concept here, we're talking like three-year pilot program.
Potentially, you could bring in a contractor to do the work if they understood the public safety and had the clearances. Most of this data, you need to be in law enforcement to receive the CGIS data.
Are there any members of the public that wish to comment or have questions on this item? I have no one coming forward in the room, and I have no hands raised online. I'd like, I'd like to thank the department for the report and all of the information. I did ask questions of Chief Locatelli because there were some things that I didn't understand. And I think that, I will just say that for the Ukiah area, because we are the county seat, we tend to have a higher impact of people that are being released either from the jail or from the state prison system, as we are the location for the Office of Parole in Mendocino County, and I believe Lake County as well. What Chief Locatelli had mentioned is that his department doesn't track parole. We do not have that data. I am glad that we know what's happening with 25% of people, but to me, the high-profile cases that we've had in our area in the last year have not been people that are on probation. They have been people that are on parole. And so as a community, we are still very much missing a piece of the judicial process, of the criminal justice process, because we are not actively able to monitor or engage with those individuals. So I don't want to be dismissive whatsoever of the presentation. I think it's very valuable information for our community to have, but I want to be very clear to my colleagues and to the community that this is not represent all of the people that are in our community that may or may not have criminal records, and that is very unfortunate. And I know something that our criminal justice partners, the sheriff, the police departments, probation, are trying to work more actively with the state to try to relieve some of those gaps so that we can continue to keep our community safe and keep people that are committing violent crimes off of the streets to the best of our ability within the current laws that we have on the books. So thank you, thank you all for your presentation. I believe that our recommended action was to receive the report. So do I have anybody that wishes to accept the presentation?
Move acceptance.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll go, do we need to vote on that, Lilly?
No.
All right. We're not going to, not going to vote on that. We, we, we received your report. Thank you so much. With that, I would like to move on to item 4C.
Chair?
Yes.
Do we have a two-minute?
Oh, let's take a five-minute break. We'll come back at 10:30. We'll come back at 10:30. Lilly, do you need?
She has made me feel like I'm important, and I can go at my own pace. And that's all you need sometimes when you're feeling like you got nobody.
It was helpful to have somebody there, kind of holding my hand and guiding me and letting me know, "This is kind of the normal." It felt like I was becoming a new mom. So it was very, it was very interesting and helpful, very, very helpful.
You know, there was that self-conscious part of me, like, will I be accepted even though I'm not perfect?
What I like the most is that she really listens.
The support that she gives me is special because she does it with love, and it's just natural, you know? That's all I could say. It just feels like somebody that I've known since I was little.
You know, I said to Jeanette, I said, "Jeanette, you're supposed to be with me for five years." Jeanette said, "Yeah, I know. I'm going to be with you guys for five years." That's when I said, "Well, I guess I can trust her. She's going to be with us for five years."
I think it happened the second time, or something like that. We formally presented ourselves. Great, hello. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. We are on item 4C. Discussion of Possible Action Including Direction to Staff Regarding An Ordnance Amendment to Establish Regulations for Small Wireless Facilities and Possible Other Amendments to the County Code and the Guidelines for the Development of Wireless Communication Facilities to Update the Regulations. Director Krog, I think you're going to start this off.
Thank you. Julia Krog, Planning and Building Services Director. And actually, I'm going to turn it over to our senior planner, Mark Kleiser, who's sitting next to me. And we have a PowerPoint presentation, so I'm going to go ahead and share my screen as well.
Great, good morning.
Good morning. Mark Kleiser, Planning and Building Services. As noted, Planning and Building Services is here today to discuss and seek direction from the Board regarding an ordinance amendment to establish regulations for small wireless facilities to County Code and the wireless guidelines. Small wireless facilities, also known as small cell towers, are rapidly taking place of macro towers. Macro towers are those facilities that are typically between 50 and 200 feet in height. As you can see here, small cell towers are typically between 3 to 4 feet in height. And unlike macro towers, small cell towers can be located on streetlights or utility poles in the right-of-way. Also, unlike macro towers, which can provide coverage for miles, small cells can only provide coverage for about a football field's size distance. This requires they be located close together and close to the end user. As you can see on this slide, some small cell facilities utilize existing structures, such as streetlights or utility poles, while others are standalone structures. The Internet of Things is the market of physical objects that are embedded with sensors, software, and other technology that require connecting to and exchanging data with other devices. As the demand for these types of devices increases, the need for small cell facilities will also increase. The market includes healthcare industry and remote workers. Planning and Building Services is seeking guidance for small cell towers that will balance the county's goal for increased wireless communications, as outlined in Mendocino County's general plan, with attention to minimizing visual impacts to our rural landscape, all the while maintaining safety, health, and well-being of Mendocino County residents. Here we have just some of the principles and policies in the county's general plan that speak to economic development, such as supporting expanded high-speed Internet and encouraging necessary infrastructure for wireless communication. And we also have some general plan goals and policies that speak to minimizing visual impacts to our rural landscape, such as reducing visual impacts of infrastructure and minimizing vegetation removal. The guidance sought today must also consider the streamlining of local review of wireless facility siting applications, as outlined in Appendix A of the attached declaratory ruling and Third Report and Order. This can be found on page 78 of the PDF attached. The declaratory ruling and Third Report and Order defines small wireless facilities. In part, this definition outlines requirements of small wireless facilities. For example, the definition requires small cell facilities be mounted on structures 50 feet or less in height, including their antennas, or are mounted on structures no more than 10% taller than other adjacent structures, or do not extend existing structures on which they are located to a height of more than 50 feet or by more than 10%, whichever is greater. It also requires that each antenna is no more than 3 cubic feet in volume, and that appurtenant equipment is no more than 28 cubic feet in volume. Any project submitted to Planning and Building Services, excuse me, that does not meet this definition can be considered incomplete. However, the ruling also requires local jurisdictions act in a timely manner, with shot clocks of 60 days for projects located on existing facilities and 150 days for projects proposing new construction. These requirements can also be found on page 80 of the attached report. Any complete project accepted by Planning and Building Services that does not adhere to this shot clock shall be deemed approved. So, when crafting policies for installation of small cell towers, considerations might include public health, safety, visual impacts, and zoning integrity. Public health and safety might address methods to prevent unauthorized access to structures, vandalism, fire safety, structural standards, and maintenance. Impacts to visuals, particularly in divisions 2 and 3, could be addressed by setting design standards for small cell facilities, limiting lights and limiting vegetation removal and/or requiring any vegetation removed for installation be replanted. Other visual impacts, such as prohibiting the use of electric fences or razor wire and limiting signage, could be addressed. Zoning integrity could be addressed by identifying preferred locations that are not in the right-of-way for small cell facilities, such as industrial zones, and limiting installation in the least-preferred locations, such as residential. And it should be noted, however, that if the project is proposed in the right-of-way, the county has no authority to deem the location off-limits. In short, the county can establish aesthetic-based location criteria, but cannot prohibit deployment in residential, commercial, and school areas in all cases if the project is being proposed in the right-of-way. Staff has some suggestions for each division regarding a small cell amendment to the ordinance. For Division 1, staff suggests an amendment to Chapter 2.0.236. Mendocino County Code Section 20.236.015 could exempt certain proposed cell facilities from the requirements of this chapter. For example, exemption could be granted to facilities utilizing existing infrastructure, and only a building permit would be required in these instances. For facilities that require installation of new structures, Mendocino County Code Section 20.236.020B, which addresses the administrative permit process for wireless facilities, could be amended to include small cell facilities. For Division 2, the process would be similar. However, staff will need to meet with the Coastal Commission to determine if appropriate exemptions, both in the county and the commissions, may be utilized for small cell facilities or when a coastal development permit is required. And for Division 3, the process would be the same as 2, with the added requirement that the project first be scheduled for Mendocino Historical Review Board. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Or member questions? Supervisor Jertie?
So I didn't ask this question ahead of time, but let me just ask it now. Is there, are you aware of any other county or city that is maybe securing some sort of long-term agreement for some sort of, maybe lease is not the right term, but just sort of compensation? I know, I know at the moment, what we're looking at is we want deployment of these wireless facilities for the economy of Mendocino County. But who knows, 10, 20, 30 years down the road, these things may be ubiquitous everywhere. And it may be potentially a lost revenue source for local governments if they're at that later point, if there isn't some sort of revenue stream. So, I'm just putting it out there. Is there an ability to say there's a right-of-way exemption where there's no fee for the first 20 years, but at that point, the county reserves the right to impose a collection of some sort of right-of-way fee or whatever? So, just putting that out there. So, I don't know if you guys are aware of any other county or city doing that, but it just seems like it could be a lost opportunity.
I am not aware of any, and I think that this might be better addressed by the Department of Transportation, as the majority of these will be in the right-of-way.
Thank you. Supervisor Williams?
I'd move the recommended action. I know you need public comment.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public that wish to comment on this item? Seeing no one come forward, I'd like to thank staff for preparing the item, and I think in quite some time we've needed to update this. And with the changing of times of technology, it's important that we're updating all of our codes. And I understand that you guys are very busy and have a lot of priorities. So, thank you for bringing it forward. Yeah, county counsel, Deputy County Counsel?
Deputy County Counsel Mathieu Gudrowski. Just to tag on to the direction of the motion, DOT has reached out to our office to see if there's anything that they could do as a policy update to the encroachment permit policy as an interim measure. So we're talking that through with the department and may bring something back. Obviously, this process with the zoning code updates that we're looking at, we'd have to go to a planning commission and come back to the Board next year. So that's something that the department may be bringing forward, hopefully, if not by the end of the year, then the first part of next year.
Thank you. Supervisor Jertie?
Okay. So, what I think I just heard you say is that, separate from this ordinance, that the department is bringing something back to the Board sometime next year. I won't be here. But at that time, the Board could discuss with their right-of-way agreements that, let's say, there's a 20-year waiver, 30-year waiver, whatever, on the right-of-way cost to the carrier that's using the county's right-of-way. That's what they wanted to do. But they could, they could leave the door open to collecting, depending what the Board does, they could leave the door open to collecting a future fee for those who are using the county's right-of-way at some future point?
Deputy County Counsel Mathieu Gudrowski, I don't have an answer in terms of what other cities or counties have done. It's something we'll have to, I'll talk to DOT and see if they have any knowledge of those things and do some research on that. At the moment, I think what DOT is concerned with is, you know, whatever kind of interim measures might be useful to have, at least as a policy, before we're able to finish the zoning code update and amendment process.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second, and we can vote by the button.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We are now, thank you for coming in this morning. We are now on item 4D. We do not have a CEO report. That'll be at our next meeting. We have no updates for item 4E, so I'd like to go to supervisors' reports regarding Board Special Assignments, standing in ad hoc committee meetings, and other items of general interest. Or start with Supervisor Jertie?
I think we may have disbanded the ad hoc, but at one point, I was, the Board had given direction for me to discuss with county staff the healthcare plan. And I just would just note that I've appreciated seeing all the notices going out to county employees about, this is sort of the time of year for them to look at signing up for the various healthcare plans. And just my own two cents, if there's a county employee listening to this, if they are married and their partner has access to a healthcare plan outside of the county plan, I hope that while they're talking to county staff about their healthcare options, that they would also ask the county staff about the option of leaving the county's plan and getting instead the county's supplemental healthcare plan. In my own household, we estimate that we're probably benefiting by about $3,000 a year by leaving the county plan and getting the county's supplemental plan, which pays substantially any costs that we have out of pockets that isn't covered by the other employer's healthcare plan. And I believe other county employees, if they inquired, they might learn they themselves might be in a similar situation. For those employees who aren't married and don't have the option of going on to their spouse's plan, there is also now, for the second year in a row, the availability of high-deductible plan. I think people, what might be wise to also inquire as to whether or not that's the right plan for them, and I would demographically say that if they were typically single and younger, they may well be better off being in a high-deductible plan because the plan's really not that different, and that gives them the legal option of creating a health savings account. And the tax benefits for anybody who has a health savings account, you can only have a health savings account if you are enrolled in a high-deductible plan, allows you to put money into a health savings account. And I would recommend they look at Fidelity's health savings account. health savings account as a model example. With no federal income tax paid to the money you put in there, you only pay state income tax on the money you put into it at the time you deposit money into it. And when you pull the money out for health expenses, which could be 10, 20, 30 years down the road, you pay no state or federal income taxes on the money that you've invested and let it grow. So, you could kind of think of it as almost like a retirement supplemental plan, and I would say, demographically, if you were fairly young, felt fairly confident about your health in the next, say, five years. Personally, if I was 25 years old, I'd be very happy to have a health savings account for five, 10, 20 years, and then switch over to a conventional plan as I got older. But anyway, so that's, I think those two options are things that I hope county employees that are listening to our meeting at least inquire about when they're looking at the enrollment period that's open right now.
Thank you. Supervisor Hachak?
Yeah, I'm the representative on the Area Agency on Aging, and there, it represents Lake and Mendocino Counties. They're in desperate need of a dietitian to be in compliance, so it's a part-time position. If anyone out there is a registered dietitian, please contact me or the Area Agency on Aging. You know, we need your help. So, you know, I talked last meeting about the workshop in January with the new supervisors coming on and giving a State of the District presentation from each district. And I was thinking about this, about Supervisor Jirdy and Supervisor McGordy aren't going to be here for that, but I think that it would really benefit us as a county to hear what their thoughts are leaving the board, because they've got a lot of institutional knowledge, and they could talk about some of the big concerns that they have. And so, thinking, you know, 15 minutes, that's what we're going to do in January with these presentations. I think that it would be good to hear from those two supervisors who are leaving us to, you know, maybe in the supervisor report in December, to give a presentation about what you think are the biggest concerns, what we need to be looking for, you know, just your thoughts on where we are. And hopefully, that's amenable to supervisors. And also, in MCAG yesterday, which is Mendocino Council of Governments, that we voted to spend $55,000 for an analysis or an assessment of residents in Mendocino County's view on a sales tax for transportation projects. So, it could be roads, it could be bridges, roundabouts, whatever these projects might be, but it would hire a consultant to look at what, if people are amenable to that kind of sales tax. And we've talked about it a lot in the board, not having the money to do a lot of the projects and road maintenance and everything that we need in the county. So, this would be one way of approaching it.
And if I could just add on that, just a reminder for anybody listening to our meeting, 80% of all Californians live in a county or a city that has a voter-approved sales tax for their roads. The residents of our four cities here in Mendocino County all have voter-approved sales taxes for their roads. The county outside of those cities is part of the 20% of Californians who do not have a voter-approved sales tax for roads, and you can see the difference. County roads in Mendocino County, along with those other counties that don't have a voter-approved sales tax, are seeing their roads get worse. Counties and cities that have a sales tax dedicated to repairing their city streets and county roads are seeing the roads getting better. But only the voters, not the board, can implement a tax. And so, I think it's critically important that MCAG is funding this voter survey, which I know that they'll be getting information from the County Department of Transportation that would inform the survey questions, because they could explain, you know, exactly what will and will not be funded if the voters approve a tax. So, that would help provide information to members of the public who might support such a tax and/or the board of supervisors, whether or not such a tax goes on the ballot. And my own personal opinion is that, given the way the courts have ruled that taxes that are brought to the voters by the voters themselves only require 50% to pass versus a tax put on the ballot by the board of supervisors or a city council require a 2/3, I think the most likely and plausible way for such a tax to be passed is if the voters themselves collect the signatures and place it on the ballot. But this survey information would be helpful to know whether or not that's plausible or not.
And just to add on to that, that this would be just in the unencoriated areas of the county, so.
Thank you. Supervisor McGordy?
So, I have a few things to report on. Some time ago, and I didn't mention this, I think, to the board, Caltrans reached an agreement for a way to resurface the streets of Hopland and new sidewalks. And there had been an issue because, under the original plan, they wanted to put in new culverts, which would have required spending money on the water and sewer system, which the Hopland Utility District didn't have money for. So, it would have cost well over $1 million, and they only have like 300 customers. So, at one point, the project was sort of halted, but Caltrans came through and decided to go through with the repaving to make the surfaces more ADA compliant. So, that's due to happen in 2025, 2026, if it goes through. There's still some work that has to be done on that, but it's, it'll be a major improvement for downtown Hopland, but also probably kind of an inconvenience, because you can imagine as, when you're working on Highway 101 inside of a slowed-down town area, it's going to have an impact. So, we'll see. I'll probably be seeing more cars going by my place on Old River Road is my guess. So, I just wanted to talk a little about harvests of wine grapes, because I just went through it. This is an interesting time for the wine industry. So, in a normal year, Mendocino County harvests about 55,000 tons of grapes. That's enough to fill about 2,300 trucks, to make about 3 million cases of wine and 39 million bottles individually of wine. It's a pretty good-sized industry. This year, there's a lot of fruit that's unsold because there's a major contraction in the wine industry going on due to oversupply, overproduction. So, of our 55,000 acres, or tons that we normally sell, we may be off by 7,000. Tons may not have a home, which is significant. It starts to cut into the income of our counties, both taxes and, you know, payroll, and it will be impactful. And I can see it even driving home every day, as there's a certain amount of vineyards that have been either abandoned or removed, mostly older things. And typically, what happens in these cycles, they happen about every 10 years, about 50,000 acres have to come out statewide of the 550,000 acres of grapes that are here to sort of balance things again. So, it's cyclical, and it's about on a 10-year cycle, and we're in it right now. So, what's, I won't say worrisome, but there's shifts in how people consume alcoholic beverages with the younger people looking at more cocktails, mixed drinks, and things in a can, and the traditional, very expensive bottles of Cabernet from Napa Valley may be losing fashion. So, just kind of as a note, as a major wine-producing county, to upgrade you, update your information so that you understand what's going on presently. Yukalla Valley Water Authority, very good news in that the Willow Water District, which was sort of a holdout in consolidation, has decided to join this new JPA. So, essentially, there will be water service from south of Yukalla all the way into Redwood Valley that's connected and will be managed by the City of Yukalla, and should provide a lot of resiliency, because they'll be able to use not only their surface water rights, but also have the backup of groundwater. So, this should make it much better for water resiliency and having it, particularly during dry periods. So, I'm really pleased to see this happen. Supervisor Mulhern has also played a role in this too, and should be acknowledged for being supportive, particularly for her district. And glad to see this go forward. It was something that, early on in my career as supervisor, I thought was a very good idea, and it's been talked about for, I don't know, 40, 50 years, and nothing's ever been done. So, it's great to see that finished or started. So, what's happening in the process right now, the City of Yukalla is going through an engineering program to come up with basically shovel-ready design and engineering, and then they'll have to apply to the Department of Water Resources safer program to probably invest about $40 to $50 million in putting in very big pipes, like 24 inches in diameter, that would bring water to the outlying areas and that would connect everything together. That's the main point of their infrastructure right now. In the Yukalla Valley Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency, we're going to move our administration most likely to the City of Yukalla to run the program rather than using an outside consultant, which I like for two reasons. A, it's cheaper, so we can lower our rates to everyone who has to pay into the JPA. And secondly, it's more local in orientation, so we'll, I feel like have a more responsive administration to work with us. So, the details of that are going to be worked out. We really haven't voted yet. That'll happen on Thursday, but I predict the outcome is going to be that we shift the administration from Weston Yost to the City of Yukalla. Also, good news on, as we try to finish this state-mandated groundwater sustainability plan, we just received a $1.3 million grant from Cal Fish and Wildlife to study the surface-water-groundwater interface, which is really critical but not well-understood. We have 160 little tributaries that empty into the Yukalla Valley and connect with the Russian River, and how that affects how groundwater is recharged, it's not largely known, so this will give us an opportunity to really study that. And finally, working with the Gil River Russian Project Authority, which is what the new Potter Valley Water Transfer will be. There's been a design now that we're working on that has been funded by the Bureau of Reclamation, and the hope is that we can continue to get funding essentially to finish that project. Water would be pumped when the river has natural flow, since there won't be any dams anymore. And now, the next step is to work on water rights to determine how much water can be transferred and when. So, that's ongoing, and the Mendocino Inland Water Power Commission is deeply involved in that, which we're members of is Mendocino County. And for the next year, it's going to be really critical to be sure that we have a continuing sustainable water supply for Yukalla Valley that comes from Gil River. So, that's basically what I have to say.
Thank you. Supervisor Williams?
What I hear most from the public is a sense that the county doesn't have milestones to fulfill its vision. And that vision may be our strategic plan, it may be other documents, and that you look at the amalgamation of each of us can put items on the agenda, and maybe we can get two other supervisors to agree with us. But that's so disconnected, it's not a cohesive plan to get from where we are today to where the public expects us to be. And I think the public understands Mendocino County is poor, and there's no way financially to meet all of the expectations, but they want us to deliberate about what trade-offs to make in a public setting and not piecemeal. And that's what I've witnessed, is this piecemeal, you know, Supervisor Jirdy's item, Supervisor McGordy's item, but there isn't an overall coordination to make sure that we have a cohesive plan and that we're balancing the trade-offs. Each of the ideas that I hear from my colleagues, I can support. I think they're good ideas. But you only have so many resources. Which of those, in which order, get us to that finish line, the best possible outcome? So, I think there must be a better way to do it, and I'm looking at Supervisor McGordy, hoping maybe RCRC is a resource to, how do other counties plan beyond an annual budget cycle and individual items? And, you know, people in my district, roads are a big topic. And, you know, all I can give as platitudes is, you know, I know county staff is working hard. I stop and talk to the road crews. I know how hard they're working. It's backbreaking work. They're filling bottles. They can't possibly keep up. You ask me, based on what I know today, everything I've received from the county, I think we have a roads crisis, and it's only going to get worse. And it's not because the department isn't run well. I think it's run exceptionally well. I think they do a good job with what they, the funding they have. There's not nearly enough money in that system, and that's one small piece of the puzzle. Where does the board have those holistic discussions about where we've been, where we are today, and where we want to go? And I can't point at a single document that describes that. I can give platitudes as good as anybody else, but the public doesn't like it. They want to see, you know, something in writing that really makes sense to the current state. Another way to put it is, I don't think I have enough information for me to do my job. I don't think any county supervisor here, for a long time, over many administrations, has had enough money to do a really good job. And maybe that's something that we want to work on, is getting a foundation of information so that we can make better decisions.
I would just, I guess, respond to that, Supervisor Williams, and to the public that may be listening. Supervisors Hachak and Jirdy discussed, and if you watch the Mendocino Council of Government meetings, and if you follow and track how road funding works, I think that it's pretty clear that the missing gap for Mendocino County is not having a sales tax to support roads. That is how we can get additional funding into our community. And the elected officials that serve on this board, the elected officials that serve in each city can play a role in helping support the community when we're talking about our finances, when we're talking about opportunities to receive additional funding. I think that's, in my opinion, just from understanding and knowing where the funding comes from, that that is one of the biggest gaps that we have as a community. And each of us, as representatives for the county, that speak to the community about our finances, play a really important role in that. And perhaps when MCAG is done with that study, we'll be able to have another discussion as a board about the funding for roads in particular and what our opportunities are for that. Supervisor Hachak?
Well, I totally agree with what you just said, and that's what we're trying to do at MCAG. And when we look at the, you know, strategic plan, and I really appreciate Supervisor McGordy's work with me on that, you know? And we got that in place, and now it's like, I understand Supervisor Williams' kind of frustration about how do we make sure that that is implemented? And one of the ideas was, like most counties do, is this workshop idea where we, at the beginning of the year, we set, you know, sit together and try to figure out, how do we implement, or what are we going to focus on this year as far as strategic plan? Because we can't do everything, but at least we can set the plates for different departments and give them guidance, and hopefully, that steers them for the year. You know, with the budget, I really appreciate what the staff is doing about doing a two-year budget at this point. And I think that that's important, too, to give more long-term forecasting for what we're doing and what, you know, the decisions we make and how they affect the long term. So, I really look forward to this two-day workshop and doing some of those things that you're talking about.
Supervisor Williams, did you have additional?
Yeah, I want to be careful we don't get a conversation going. Council will remind us, and she's right.
Well, I do have additional pins up, so.
Okay, but I want to thank John for the workshop idea. I think that's incredibly valuable, and that's part of what I'm talking about, finding a better way for the five of us to work together throughout the course of the year. So, I think that's an excellent idea. I would hope this board would facilitate a process of requesting information and getting information for that workshop in advance, so that we don't get the work to the workshop. And I don't want you to have to hear me say, but I don't have the information I need, right? And you can't produce it on the spot. Between now and then, what is that process for making requests so that we have everything compiled necessary to carry out a meaningful workshop?
Sounds like that's something Supervisor Hachak can take that feedback and work on that. Supervisor Jirdy?
Yeah, so I'm thinking, many years ago, Fort Bragg City Council, one of the things that we did there, and granted, there's only four departments at the City of Fort Bragg, not all the departments that the county has, but following adoption of the budget in June, in the next following couple meetings, there would be a presentation from one of the county or city's departments about, hey, this was the budget you approved, here's what we did in the last year, here's what we're going to do in the next year. And I think during COVID, we kind of saw a drop-off of presentations from county departments. I mean, we still planning buildings here very often, a couple of the other departments are here fairly often, many other departments are fairly silent. I haven't, since COVID, I haven't seen Social Services, I think, give a presentation to the board. the board, and it's the single biggest department. And I know we have leadership change there and et cetera, but it just seems to me that maybe in advance of this new workshop, which should be with the new board, because I'm certain that the two incoming board members are watching our meetings, whether they're physically present or not, maybe between now and then, several of the departments that have not been at these board meetings in several months, and I would say Social Services is one of them, could, in the month of December, give some presentations. I mean, certainly today, we only had half a day's worth of meeting. We could have had a presentation from a couple of departments, just, hey, here's what we did last year, here's what we're doing this next year that's new and different. And so it'd be kind of a reset with the board, and in particular with the new board, about what these departments are doing, which would be helpful leading into a strategic planning discussion by the new board.
Thank you. I think that's also good information for the incoming chair and the executive office to figure out how departments could potentially be teed up to present when agendas have items that are pulled. It's sort of in flux when agendas change frequently, and so maybe just having departments be prepared in case there's opportunities to present. Thank you. Great discussion. I, at the last board meeting, discussed, talked about that the Russian River cleanup was happening. My group went on Oar Creek from Orchard Avenue to Ford Street, and I was grateful for all of the participants and the, what appeared to be a reduction in the amount of trash in the waterways, I think due in large part to the work of the Yukaya Police Department and City of Yukaya Streets and Parks Departments that have been putting a lot of focus on the area and all of the creeks within the second district in the city limits and making sure that those stay clean. I toured the Mendocino Redwood Company's sawmill last week, and they were discussing an opportunity, some studies that they're doing about creating a small biomass facility and potentially a biomass-to-hydrogen facility. At this point, there's not as much of a market demand for hydrogen as there may or may not be in the future, but I think it's exciting for a community to have private industry that's exploring those options, and really appreciated being invited on that tour. Supervisor Hachak, at the last meeting, had mentioned that we attended the drug court graduation. I also attended the family drug court graduation, and as the community has these discussions around addiction, around crime, around homelessness, I think it's really important for people to understand how successful these programs can be for individuals that are involved in them. I've been to drug court graduations for the last 10 years, and that was my first time attending a family drug court dependency program. And I understand that participants are not always willing to start those programs in the beginning, but I think showing the success, especially for families that have children and are able to get into a different place in their lives through those programs, is really, really powerful, and I appreciate all the county staff that work on those programs. And Supervisor McGordy?
Just one other thing on cleanup, I want to acknowledge the Mendocino County RCD and Adam Gasko specifically for the work that they did on Ackerman Creek in cleaning up a rather major, almost like village of homeless people and also possibly drug dealing that the sheriff was concerned about. So it was a pretty major cleanup, and my understanding was that there was still more to go, and that the solid waste was able to deliver a 30-yard roll-off dumpster to help finish the cleanup, to pick up the remaining garbage.
Thank you. With that, we can adjourn the meeting. Thank you.